All right. Just finishing up with the bills.
I'm approving, so I just need to say.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Is your second?
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Close, okay, Gary. Approval of the May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Motion to approve those meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for on May.
Is your second?
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Under the mayor's report, I guess under the grants, the, I served upon fifty-seven thirty-seven grant, we were notified that we were eligible to receive that grant as long as we meet all the grant requirements, so.
What does that specifically mean?
Oh, that's.
Yeah, so they have to find out, like, if we've already done things, like, so, anything we've done before they issue a grant is, may not be allowed to be covered, so, there's a few things like that, they have to determine, work through it. It's a process that they always do with every, like, sort of green. I call them negotiations, but.
Yeah, I believe, because we had to order this electric equipment for this upgrade.
Pretty far in advance.
You know, you just can't say, oh, let's order now, wait until you see if you get a grant, and order, some of this stuff is out over a year to get, so we had to order a lot of this equipment, so, you know, we would need a variance to say, hey, yes, we understand that you had to order this stuff, out of time to get it in here, to meet your deadline of time, so, things like that. That and what's it, the MWBE, make sure you do your best to see if you meet the standards and qualifications for that, you know, at least try to get that, and if you don't, you don't, but at least you made the effort, so that's what they're looking for, things like that. So we'll do our best and hopefully get that two hundred thousand dollars grant, so, looking good though. Again, the Fast New York right now is being administered by Municipal Solutions with assistance from our engineering firm, PLM and Courtney Gal. DOT, we're still waiting for them to do their signage changes on Buffalo Road, both coming in East and West, till they do that, we don't know where our sign can go.
What signage changes are they specifically referring?
Oh, they're supposed to put some other bigger thirty mile an hour signs up, and they're supposed to put thirty mile ahead when you're coming in from, toward, you know, going towards Churchville. And again, they want certain distances between all these signs, so, we'll stay on with that about that. Hickory Way, they're still doing their study, the DOT is doing a study to see what impact it'll have on that driveway at the park. I did contact Tennessee County Highway signage, and they're gonna make up the new street sign, Hickory Way, so that won't cost the village any money. And then, we'd have, gotta put a permit in as soon as they get done with their study, and we'll submit a permit to get that signed up. Other than that, I attended the semi-annual meeting, an annual, the MEO and NIPA meeting, May twenty-first, twenty-second, Syracuse. It's, kinda hear the same thing for the last couple of meetings, how, you know, ambitious the state is as far as pushing these electric incentives and getting things passed, but now, the state is really starting to realize that they, they're not gonna be able to meet the deadlines that they're looking at. That along with a lot of the school systems now are shutting down, voting down the electric buses, so they're.
Smart.
Starting to say, hey, what are we doing here, so. Been dealing with National Grid concerning our substation upgrade for the interconnection We have to swing the lines that they feed our substation with, they're currently, they're hooked onto our metal's substation, and we're putting a new pole line in, and we have to swing them off that. They'll have to do that, actually, and put them onto our pole, but they wanted the study done, because we're putting a little bit bigger transformers in the substation, so they wanna know what the overall impact's gonna be, that downstream, it's called relay coordination, to make sure that everything downstream is gonna, is gonna work fine with the, with our upgrades, so they're working on that. Again, we're hosting the Western Regional on June eighteenth for the MEO. This was being held every year prior to COVID, a different system each year would host, and we're trying to get it back online again. It's really good for mutual aid, it's mainly line guys, but it's mutual aid, I mean, when you need help, it's nice to pick up a phone and talk to people that you, that you've, you know, dealt with.
Something in common, yeah.
Yeah, and, so, when I was superintendent, I worked very hard to build up the mutual aid around the Western Regional, and we really have come a long, long ways, and we have a lot of allies, this village now has a lot of allies. When the, when the storm hits here, we'll have a lot of municipals in line waiting to come here to help us prior to them committing to, like, RGENE or National Grid or other systems, I mean, 'cause we've been there for them, and they will be there, be here for us when we need them. So it's important to, that mutual aid is very important. The BBCA met with her briefly here on the ninth to go over the traffic control, and Courtney's relayed those, what has to be done for the traffic control, for the Park Day, for the parade, so, everything's in line for that. You know, we do quite a bit, the village, I should say, does quite a bit for Park Day, as far as readying the park and, you know, making the streets safe with barricades and, just everything for the day, you know, getting the park ready, you know, keeping the bathroom stocked, electricity, the village does quite a bit for the Park Day, which is good, it's a good function for the village residents, and it's nice working with the BBCA, 'cause they do a great job. We had a major water leak in this back parking lot, I swear, it was leaking for years, I'm talking years, and they were told about it, numerous times, and they'd come out and they'd check, and, oh, it's not our water, it's groundwater, it's not our water. Well, now they came out, when they had to stake out for their, for our project back there, for our wastewater sewer excavation, they came out, they saw that, and they tell, oh, that is our water. So, I can't estimate how many millions.
Oh, yeah.
And millions, and millions of gallons have dumped down that catch basin.
Wow.
And you go out there now and it's dry, you know, it's not.
Just because they gave them fixed that?
They fixed it.
Wow.
And we couldn't do our project until they did their project, because my fear was, I, you know, we were always told groundwater, so my fear was, boy, when we excavate our, our area, what's gonna happen, is it gonna fill up with water? Is there an underground spring there? And, you know, what's the impact gonna be to the village trying to, we're gonna just be able to see what we got and say, and seal it back up, 'cause we don't have the funding to finish this project, but it turned out to be their water, and now, Courtney, we got a time when they're coming back to start the project again?
I haven't heard that they, that they're coming back, but I got to stake out for it today.
Okay.
So I would assume next week.
They have replaced two basins in my yard.
I was gonna say.
Did they do Richmond?
Yes.
Okay.
So you got, that's what's going on in your backyard now?
Yeah.
Okay. Have you heard of manholes?
Yeah, they're big, like, ten foot high.
Yeah. What a muddy mess that made. I feel bad for you.
Yeah.
Is that just for overflow water from the creek?
No, it's wastewater, yeah, wastewater, creek was flowing into them, they were leaking, and all that extra water was going to our sewer plant.
Now, will we be able to monitor the difference in, in water flow?
We should, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Sure we should.
That'd be interesting to see, to see how much.
There's multiples of these doing that, right, sure, four?
There's four. The last one was out in the parking lot, 'cause we wanted to get the parking lot milled and paved, it's in pretty rough shape, but we couldn't do that until this, until the basins replaced, so we had to put that on hold, so, waiting for them to come back, do their thing, and then we can schedule milling and paving.
Was there a chance that that water from mineral water was getting into our sewer system?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's not helping.
Yeah, I got, yeah, I gotta say, yeah. It's in the area.
So you have a video of the water, the two in Joe's yard and the one now back here, years ago, when we started to look into doing this, we opened them up during the spring, it was especially wet, and the amount of water that was flowing into them from the little side walls, groundwater pouring in was unbelievable.
Wow.
If we can eliminate that, less water with a treatment plan.
A lot of the other stuff that's going on with DPW, you can see Courtney's report, there's quite a bit of stuff going on, but he's got it all outlined in his report, so I will touch on that. So, Courtney, can you?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I'll write my report. Park Fest, Joe mentioned Park Fest coming up Saturday, so, DPW is busy getting the park all set, and getting it downtown, and the whole village looking nice, nice as they can. Grippo was there last week, and they sealed the track, and the basketball court and parking lot, all looks really, really nice and sharp. Parks looking really nice, they've removed a lot of poles, the lights are, all those, pole lights are working great, they're working on the electric behind streets and park view, so that whole pole line's coming down, not too much longer, that'll be gone, so.
Daring?
What's that?
They're burying it.
Yes, yep. So that, they'll, they'll be better, so, it's going along well. The bridge that's sage, they were at that, they're just paying, chipping off a bit, the port, on the top rails were banged up, so they're gonna, they're gonna have it all look nice. They have to do something with the deck, we talked about a lot of things, but, it gets slippery in the wintertime, tried a few different things, we have to plow it, so we have to pump the decent solution that we want, that. Just kind of jump around here, Spectrum lots of put pole, poles, attached where polls to get to Oxbow, and they put in an application to do that, but I'm holding up their application and, 'cause they have not signed the pole attachment agreement, did a new pole and attachment agreement probably a couple of years ago, everybody else has signed it except for Spectrum, and they just kinda ditched us.
Where would that start from, the place right here on Rochester Street all the way out to Oxbow?
No, they already have some out there.
Okay.
They just wanna continue it and to get it to Oxbow, so, it's not very many poles, but, you know, like, four or five poles that they need to attach to, but, it's just, you know, we're so small, they don't care about us, so, they want us, if we want a new attachment agreement, they could just, like, be in the company, and they don't care about us. Only time they care is when we hold them up, so, this is now the chance to get them to sign it, so, we did the same thing with Frontier last year, they owe us money, and they finally paid after, like, two, three years of not paying. But they're, you know, they were cordial about it, and they're working towards getting that signed, so hopefully that will, sooner than later. We talked about it earlier, but the orange bags, we, Joe Ray and I went around, we started today, it was a perfect date for it, went around, and for those in everybody's house, says, we got probably about half of the village done. We're getting better at it, you know, it took this stuff about three hours, three and a half, like that, so, we should be able to finish most of it up tomorrow.
Did you get a lot of people chatting with you?
We try, yes, a little bit, but we try not to, because we're trying to get it done, and there's some people who, you know, like to talk, so, we get, had to get held up for a long time, get chatty, you know.
Does she have the new beep rates in it, or not? 'Cause we talked about that last time.
No, but just, just the program information, doesn't say how much, or just, just what the kind of programs we have, and the director of the website, to take a look.
Yeah.
But there we also, we, so there's a outlet timer, that's in there, and then, information on the water market and the concert series, and the information. Tax season. Tax season started, the bills were mailed out June second, due June thirtieth. As of Monday, we received five percent, but we're, you know, getting quite a bit of bills in all the time. Really, the people walk in and pay their taxes, it's really a small percentage, most of you have escrow, so, we'll get huge when the corologic one comes in, you know, we yield fifty percent of the payments. June first is the new budget year, so, you know, that starts the whole process again of closing out the previous fiscal year, and all this recording, whatnot, the AUD or the AMR now is called, and then there's three reports I gotta send to the Public Service Commission with the beep program, but that'll take a few months, so, that's a quick time apart for a while. We have a credit card, you know, POS over there, and we use, and just out of the blue, we got a message on the machine that said, our service is being terminated, and, okay, so I call them up, and they, they're very, like, strict about it, they didn't wanna talk about it, they didn't wanna, like, let me, like, you know, plead a case here, like, you violated the terms of use, you're done as of this date, nothing else.
And for how many years, eight years?
I mean, it's, I'm not sure, it could be ten, we've had it a long time.
Wow.
And then, she directed me to the terms, sent, emailed me the terms of use, and I can I look at it, and one of the things was it prohibited was used by your government, state, local, federal.
Took them that long?
So, I said, why now? She said, well, they, we do periodic checks, and, you know, we have so many customers, it just, we found here, so, that's it.
Now, this specifically in reference to people paying your utility bills?
So if they come in and pay with a credit card for, you know, for left of your sewer.
Then they got it lined or anything?
Not online, just in person.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's like a Swiper terminal?
Yes.
So it's not, it wasn't given to you, or issued to you by the bank?
No, it was called Square.
Oh, okay, that's like an inch of it.
Yeah, right, right, so we had to go out and find a new service and purchase the new equipment and all over again.
Same rates?
It's a little bit better for now, but, it's like, two years, and then they go up.
Oh, I thought maybe 'cause it, 'cause it was the local government, that they'd give you a better rate.
No, unfortunately not. So we're working on through that, everything a little different. Summer rack, yeah, excited about summer rack again, June thirtieth and August eighth, we got Evie Rodriguez, who's done it for the last few years, and Denver Catalino, she's been helping for the last couple of years, so, but Evie's been doing it probably for quite a while now, it's, that'd be a nice, one of those things for the community, continuing.
Those numbers that you got for the Bobcat and Skids Year, are they in line with the kind of what you were expecting?
Yeah, right around that, the Skids Years are, always been right around that. I think, though, that we should, I don't think we're gonna lose much money on it if we hold it for a little longer, so I think instead of doing it every other year, I'd like to see it pushed out to like three or four. The one that the, we have this, so we just, we don't use the whole that much, to, we always have low hours, the, the lineman's Skids Year only, it's four years old and in pretty much shape, but, that'll still bring good money, that, but the, the zero term, I think because of the gravely, it's not, you know, a Kubota or one of those, so it did get a little less money than I would expect it.
But you also paid less for it, right?
Right. So, the two, we're scheduled to buy a mower this spring, but, we got, we got it in the X mark last summer, last spring, and we could kind of leave the new one to the side, just use the older one, so that one didn't, the X mark didn't get used that much, and then the wheel fell off of the newer grain leaf, so that was at, getting fixed for a month, so, we used this one that just got sold the most, so the two ones we have, I think the X mark only had like eighty hours on it, so we're not gonna buy them all this year. I might wait, maybe in the fall, if they have some sales on mowers, I'll look into it, but it doesn't make any sense, but it's this whole, hours to sell it, so, that's an idea.
You think we spend like four hundred hours a year on a mower?
Yeah.
The average.
Seems kinda funny that it took months to fix a bike?
Yeah, well, it happened to so many, so the tire fell off, and it was the assembly, and it was happening across of all their new ones all at the place, so they couldn't get parts to fix it, 'cause everybody else is, you know. Yeah, they, for some reason, they decided to change the, the design.
Yeah, the old one's got a counterpin in it, and they left fifty cent counterpin off, now it, it backed off, and the wheel fell off, you know.
There's a key in there, right? Is that?
Yeah, there was a counterpin thing too, that would've been.
So then the new design?
Yeah.
Engineer.
Yeah, let's say fifty cents.
So the red forest coming in next month, and then the vehicle we had now was still gonna remain here until then, or?
Yes, yeah, so he told me about two months, and that was about a month ago, so, you know, if it comes in on time, it'll be about a month. The car out back was having, it needed oil change, and the two tire sensor, and brakes and rotors, so, we took it in, we just got it back earlier this week, and it rides so much better. The, it sits there, just sits there for so, so long, and it drove, driven so much, and the rotor's delaminated, and, so, it must've been rubbing it against the brakes the whole time, because you hear it, like, grinding, but it's riding so much better now, so, it'll be in good shape when we sell it. It's saving us fourteen hundred hours for the best.
What's that?
Oh, I have a question though, about the first one, about the lead pipes, so is that what the holes are? Like, I noticed walking that there's holes in the.
Yeah, the real county water contracted, to have them check all the house services to see if there are lead, lead pipes going into the homes, so they're checking everybody's and documenting what the service is going into the house.
They'll put tags on the doors.
Yeah, you should get a little pad, a little packet.
Well, I wondered, 'cause I saw the holes in front of some houses, but not in front of ours, not in front of every house.
I, they did, oh, maybe just based on the age of your house.
Oh.
Yeah, they were looking through galvanized pipes, or copper going in, if there's lead.
They did mine in November last year, they came and did it again, they called them, they said, you just did it, they said, what the hell are you doing? You're like, oh, well, I guess my records aren't for that. You just planted it, it grew in, now you gotta reseed it again. Honestly, they're like, they're idiots.
See, if who's working over a billion, uh, doing the same thing. Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're pretty booked about it.
It doesn't take long, they're following.
They, there was a hole, there was one hole on Munder Street, that was there for, I don't know, at least a week or two with no marker.
There shouldn't be holes.
It was a hole.
They fell right back in.
This one looked like they pulled the telephone pole out of it. I mean, maybe it was only that deep, but it was definitely an angle breaker, for sure. And I just kept watching every day, thinking, I should've called, I should've called.
Is it still, like that?
No, I think this morning I noticed it was filled in.
Okay, well, if you notice it.
I'll check it, I'll check it.
Call the office, run it off, the guy's the one who filled it in.
Okay. I should've called the first time, but you know, by the time you get home, maybe you forget, but the next time you're walking, like, oh, gosh, it's ten o'clock at night, it's like, who am I calling?
Can get dive bombed by the flies.
Then, so I was in contact with someone that drove my sequel.
Well, last year when it filled mine, it did, after it rained, it sunk about six inches, so I had to put my own dirt in it.
Yeah.
While I'm thinking of it, Saturday is the parade for Park Day, it's at twelve o'clock, if any of the trustees wanna walk in the parade, no time's gonna walk, I'm hugging it, Steve Hawley's in it, if anyone wants to walk in the parade, we meet about quarter to twelve, usually we're down, down Rochester Street, about halfway down, in line.
Near about Rochester?
What's that?
Near about Rochester?
Yeah, yeah, pretty close to there, along that area, that's how long, you know, depends how long the parade is, but when they stage it all around Leroy and Clinton, and then up Rochester, you know, last year, that's where we were starting out at anyways, so, again, it's like, if anyone's interested, throw it out there, if you wanna walk in the parade, you can do so with us. Okay. We've got Gary's monthly CEO/CEO report. Gary is now our CEO also, he met all the standards for the state, so, Jerry Wood used to be our CEO, but now Gary being our CEO, it just makes more sense that he's the CEO, he's the CEO here for the village, so, we did not reappoint Jerry Wood, and we appointed Gary to fill both those roles very well.
I noticed the house on corner of, McCandie and Clinton, looks nicer, the Big Ralph on the corner, across from Renee, and it's cleaned up, like, it's much more cleaned up than the driveway area, so I wanted to guarantee that.
And I don't know. We did, I did speak with Mr. Wick, and he did take his stumps down, looks much, much nicer, so, you know, thanks to him for doing that for us.
Thanks.
Made a big difference, so.
That's a start.
All right, trustee concerns.
The designated rules for the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I make a motion to approve the reports of officers.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Well, my couple things I already said, so.
Okay, yeah, check that poll out again, although if it's still there, make sure you call the office and look at the guy who's over there, before somebody gets hurt.
And noticing that the house on front of McCandie looks much better, so I hope that was okay.
No concerns. Todd?
The only thing that catches my eye, as a person who walks around the village every day, is people need to be a little more conscious when they mow their lawns, and try to clear the sidewalk from the grass, I mean, we've had a lot of rain, and I almost ended up on my butt a few times.
I'll, I'll put that in my next newsletter, hopefully.
I do have something when you get around.
Okay. Anything else, Todd?
No.
Bob?
Continuing with the jake break thing, the signs, I, Courtney sent me the noise ordinance that we have, but there's no decibel limit, and according to Laura at the county, we need to have a decibel number, so that we can be assured that they're violating that, so my suggestion is, we find out how loud they are, and then we, we have something below that, so that we're guaranteeing. I just stopped at number eighteen tonight, up there on two sixty-two, the one that's left, first one up the hill. She said her windows rattle when those things hit those jake breaks.
I'm sure.
She said, she said, thank you, thank you, my windows, honest to God, they shake when those guys hit that jake break, she said, it's just awful.
I wonder if there's somewhere, where you can find that, like, what other villages use as a decibel?
You know, I wanna look into.
I just think they have a way of measuring.
You can't look up the Village of Arcade, because they have.
Village of Arcade, because they have posted signs stating no jake breaks entering the the village. And see what their criteria is or that.
Yeah, because she said we can't go any further until until, so I'm looking through the noise ordinance and there's no number there. It's just subjective loud, that's what it loud means, you know what I mean? So she said we can't do anything with that until you have a number, so.
Okay.
So that's where we are with that.
I never heard that before and I just noticed it when I was driving through, I was starting to think in in one of those towns, they had it. Never would notice it before hearing you guys say it.
Yeah, when I was was out in Ohio, I seen my son, they're all over, no engine breaks, no engine breaks. Arcade, I think, had theirs their streets posted for over ten years now. Yeah, so but we're only allowed to do two sixty-two, can't do nineteen.
Or the village streets you can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to exclude.
Because of state and they said it would take years, it would take years to get it.
We are, we are at the tracks.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah. So I know the the people with the water, they got canned recycling, I just saw them today too, and they're saying they can come in into the village and. But nineteen is like, yeah, it'll be years before you get anything out of the state, so. But at least we can address that one. And the county was very receptive, they said, we'll make the signs up for you and everything, so.
So are there other streets that need it then too?
Well, yeah, but we again, we have, you know, coming into the coming into the village.
Right here at the tracks.
Yeah, but it's not nineteen, it can't.
State road.
So it was thirty-three state road or no, is it? There goes that.
Buffalo Road, Buffalo Road and nineteen.
Under Street, I would imagine Under Street has a problem.
I think we'll press through there.
So anyway.
Okay, we can check with uh.
Yep.
Arcade then and.
Yeah, I'm sure that they've and they're somewhere in their village, I'm sure they've gotta add the criteria for that.
Yeah, and then when we get a number, we can amend the. The noise ordinance.
To add to. To local law.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then the other thing is, I still got kids with dirt bikes going through and onto the village property, so I don't know if there was any plan for a sign, and we talked about it before, but.
I I.
A sign up.
We have a sign then.
Okay.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
We have one and we just didn't know exactly where.
Yeah, well, I will be glad to show you where it was, so.
We're right at the end of McCade Court, wasn't it?
Yeah, the end of McCade Court.
Right at the end of the blacktop right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I totally heard that work.
There were three signs.
There were three?
I think it was four, three, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there usually was one by, well, it used to be the Public Works there, but by uh now the the pavilion, you know, as it comes up and around, they used to go up that hill. You know, and they had a sign there to where the old wells were.
Oh, okay.
By Sage Pavilion?
Probably.
By the Sage Pavilion?
Yeah, yeah, that used to be a public works building in the old days. But yeah, kids come through and they.
Some of these kids on our street.
They go right up, they go right up the hill and, you know, you can see them tearing up everything.
Go up to the hill.
Yeah.
Or around Richmond.
Your neighbors.
Yeah, my neighbors. Yelling at them.
Yeah. I put a sign up saying, you know, no dirt bikes through here, I don't care if you walk, I tell them, you can walk it through here, I don't want you driving it through here, you know? Anyway, that's it.
Mike, you got something?
Yeah, I'm just gonna piggyback off some Todd said last week about the dogs um being unleashed. Is there a way to put something in the newsletter just to remind people, cause I also had two dogs attack my dog this as I was walking.
Where'd that happen, Mike?
On Richmond, walking up.
Were they in people's yards and then you're walking and they're coming out?
They charged, they had, they charged hand and feet. I um I it like Todd said, if I was Karen, I'd have taken it out, cause he literally attacked my dog. So just a reminder of people, you know, it would it worked out okay, the owner yelled and but and I know it's a dead end street and not a lot of people, but we use that trail, you know? So just in the letter newsletter maybe, remind folks leash your dogs, keep your dogs tied up, whatever.
On our street, they put a fence in, they put really tall fences.
Well, my dog hides behind me, you know? Mike, what's wrong with your dog? Behind me?
Okay, yeah, I'll get it in there.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'm in new business. First thing is our resolution number five of twenty twenty-five agreement with the DOT, this has to do with our. The DOT wants to uh take the bridge out at nineteen, widen widen the bridge, and we have some power poles down there that we need to. They need us to move the poles so they can widen that bridge. So.
How far out does the village electric go there, Joe?
To the gun club. Yeah, the gun club's our last customer.
Okay. Thanks or no?
Across the street, no.
No, Doc, thanks, the whole place, no?
No.
Okay.
No, that's. He wanted us years, many years ago. And went into a court case, and that's when we won the.
Oh, down here?
Industrial Park, we won that, the court ruling was you had to get out of Doc Fink's property, cause we already had underground wire and everything in there.
He didn't want us there?
He wanted, Doc, Doc Fink wanted our power there.
Why didn't he keep getting them?
Because it's out of our franchise area. Everybody's got an area that this is ours, you can't encroach on.
So it's a rather.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. So uh. They're looking for this resolution.
Need a motion for this one?
Uh, yes.
Everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion then to approve uh resolution number five, authorizing execution of the agreement with the New York State Department of Transportation.
Okay, is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Gary?
Is there any bringing up, you know, that?
No.
State required, so. Just another of those things.
Okay, the second one is resolution six of twenty twenty-five to support the submission of smart growth planning. Uh, grant application on the village of Virgin, when you apply for grants. Shows that you're doing everything you in your power for a smart growth as a as a municipality to promote it.
What does that mean?
Well, it's it's. It's how you your comprehensive plan, how you want. How you want your whole municipality uh growth wise. We honestly don't have a whole lot of room inside the village for smart growth.
What would be an example of something you would add that would be considered smart growth?
I mean, they call you like the housing, the park view?
Yeah, it's it's smart growth is a designation that the state and the county coming up with theirs, but um.
It's probably environment environmental friendly, um future planning for development, right?
Right, and it's also preserving certain things like, you know, they.
Historical.
Overall impact.
At one point they put in, you know, you don't wanna overtake too much farmland, of course, and then they just put sort of.
And then firing panels everywhere.
So is this in in preparation for?
For bright funding.
Is it in preparation for specific, you know, like development on park view?
No, so we got, we need to update our comprehensive plan, and so we're going to try to get a grant to pay for that. And this is the first step towards applying for the grant for the comp plan.
What's a comprehensive plan mean?
That that's your whole plan for next decade, say, how you want your village.
The planning board typically takes the lead on that. But it's really how will you see your village in the next ten years developing and growing and kind of what what do people want? That's the comprehensively look at the plan.
There'll be surveys, lots of surveys, lots of meetings, to get input to see whatever the community wants.
And that happens every how often?
The last one was twenty sixteen.
Supposed to be ten years, I think.
Yeah.
I did one with the planning board when I was on at one time. And that was fifteen years ago, or whenever that was.
Twenty sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
So, yeah. And that's what one of the grants is in my report, one of the first grants, CFA grant, the dollars.
These survey events, I know what they want, and the park development was a big one in the last one.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution six for twenty twenty-five resolution to support the submission of smart growth planning grant application.
Okay, is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary? I think we have a new member. Wishing to uh. Be a volunteer in our Virgin Fire Department, which is always a good thing. Joshua Best, I surely recognize the name.
Jess Best.
Joshua Best.
I assume.
Better husband, right?
I don't know.
Might be your husband. Cause I think why don't she have two daughters? They're not there anymore.
They're not, yeah, that's true.
Well, the fire department's uh is recommending this individual, they've done their background check and uh.
So do we have to approve it?
Yes, we have to approve all members.
I I mean, I'll I'll make a motion to approve Joshua Best as a new member of the Virgin Fire Department.
Okay, very good, is there a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Other customers' names, Jason.
Maybe that was a son?
So that'd be a son.
Yeah.
Okay, new old business, the BEAT program review, Courtney, I'll let you take over here.
Yeah, um, I guess if you guys have looked over the things, I sent that link, I thought it was easier than sending all these attachments. So it really, it's hard to. Arbitrarily put a number on something for rebates, so you know, take the it's like, does he. So I had a friend who got a refrigerator. And it wasn't over expensive, I mean, I shouldn't say it's over expensive, they're all they're all refrigerator expensive. I didn't buy it, it's a super expensive model, uh so the refrigerator rebate's one twenty-five, uh we also have seventy-five dollars rebate. If you get rid of your refrigerator, so you don't put it in your garage and, you know, use that electric up. So he, you know, he so he gets two hundred dollars and the refrigerator costs two hundred, twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars. So. I I don't know what the best way to go about this is. One thing it turns me in is a percentage. It'd be fair if we give a percentage of these things. But the humidifier, for instance, probably isn't cost a whole lot, so if you do. So they have the humidifier costs two hundred bucks, and say you do ten percent, you're only getting twenty bucks, you know? But refrigerator, if we give ten percent, then, you know, say it's like a hundred.
Two hundred percent.
So that's that's not bad, but, yeah.
Well, maybe you could do that on just the things that tend to be much more expensive. And maybe the flat rethings are small things.
So you get a rebate for buying one, just for purchasing, and then you also can apply so the military moves that.
Well, you know, we usually will live ourselves. Well, like in this case, the company sold it to him, took it with them, but as long as it's out of the military, we'll pay for it. Before people would just, we would just tell people to put it up to the curb. And before we even had a chance to get it, the scrappers would already be gone, and that's perfectly fine with me. It's not the big day, it's gone, we don't have to take care of it. Now that Metalco's not there, we have to travel quite a ways to take scrap.
So Schofield's probably the closest one to Stafford.
Metalco's not there anymore?
No.
No, that closed over a year ago.
And lately, because of like the freon and laws with refrigerators and whatnot, um, when people, I don't think scrappers are allowed to cut it out of them themselves and take it to the scrapyard. I don't think they can take them, so now they're just taking the doors.
And even the shopper.
Yeah. As long as I don't.
So the the overall, we haven't been using the money overall, right? For this part, we're racking up.
That's right.
Quite a bit, so.
So you're trying to incentivize?
So we want to incentivize more, right, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, and at this point, I don't know if the pro I don't think the problem is the cost as much as people not.
Fully aware?
Right.
I think so, or in another way, yeah.
I did a couple of those and didn't even put anything.
I wouldn't have known about the furnace, I would, you know, it's like, okay, furnace, wow.
And the problem is that every single year for the last ten years, we we've walked around and put information on on the door of every single house. So people still call and are surprised and.
Well, you just don't think about it.
Right.
When you put out a water meter, I never even thought about it.
Yeah. And and, yeah, you know, you see it when you get it and you're like, oh, that's great, I'll remember next time, and you put it aside and you forget.
How far back do you go?
A year, yeah, a year, yeah, a year. So I I think is we haven't really increased these since we started BEAT, just a little bit here and there. So they're they're definitely doing to increase the the rebates, but getting awareness is I think the key part. And I don't know how to do that. Years ago, we did we did magnets with contact information for people, you know, in the village. Like mayor, PBL supervisor, the office, those things. I don't know if we did the same kind of thing for BEAT, so how people went together. Refrigerators and the number.
Do people put things on their refrigerators still?
I do.
I don't decide, no, that's fine.
And I've 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 seen a number of people who still have the 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 old magnets on their refrigerators. Even though half the more information's the longer. Uh, I don't know, just we need to come up with some ideas to.
Do you listen in the newsletter too? Or no, could you just list it as a standard square in the newsletter?
People really read those.
You do, I don't know.
Yeah, I would love to really find out how many people read the newsletter to see if it's actually.
I love it.
I I do now.
I love reading your note, I love the historian, although the historian one this week, it was said it the historian, but then there's nothing there.
Well, we do social media as a village, right? I don't, I look at the Facebook and what else do we do? Social media.
I think there's Instagram.
Instagram too. There are web pages.
Um, Bart does Facebook, Bart, Bart does Facebook, Ray does.
So maybe a campaign on that for a period of time, right?
To be honest, I wouldn't mind taking a packet around to the subdivision and put them for everybody so that they're aware, you know?
Yeah, you'd put it in the package, you said, right?
Yeah, it's going at every door now.
Yeah.
Every electric customer's getting one.
Okay, there's a brochure.
There's a brochure.
There's a brochure in every packet, every you get.
With the timer that's going, and so this is what that you said?
No, just there's a brochure that has it says BEAT on it, and then you open it up and it shows all the different.
Programs.
Programs, not the dollar amounts, but it's just a kind of outline of the programs. And like I said, we've been doing exactly that for ten years, you know, with the light bulb, putting a light bulb in with it and.
I I think it would be useful for people to see the dollar amounts, cause they look at the dollar and they're like, wait, you can get hundreds of dollars.
It would be a little reminder, go, hey, oh, jeez, you know what, we're getting a refrigerator or dehumidifier, you know, we should look, yeah, see how much.
I think we should bump them up a little bit. I don't know, the size is fine, but.
Think about it, your average refrigerator now is fifteen, eighteen, hundred.
Yeah, that's more than that.
The only two things I'm just, the thermostat and the dehumidifier, I mean, things that are still pretty reasonable, everything else is over five hundred.
Yeah.
Minimum, so I mean, if you bump everything to a hundred at least.
We had we have a surplus, we're using that surplus for the vehicle, correct? Okay, so will we have more surplus after the vehicle's purchased then?
Well, that's we still have more.
Well, it'll it'll drop the the money, the savings quite a bit.
Right.
Um, but it'll get built back up as time goes, especially.
Automatically rebuild it.
Every build, every building cycle, we get more added to it.
It's in the electric bill or which?
Part of it, part of the electric bill, yeah.
It's kind of mandated at its time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I agree with you about raising them.
They just should be one hundred, one hundred and twenty-five across the board, except for those two minor items, they can stay at fifty or whatever, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, the refrigerator freezer, definitely. And even air conditioners, hot water, they all do.
And that bought a six hundred.
Is that cheap anymore?
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, that's cheap too.
Right, that was that was nine of the best ones.
Yeah. Now, air conditioner could mean window air conditioner, right? Those are a lot cheaper than like. Those are a lot cheaper than like a C.
Yeah, that's what they're referring to.
What about, um, a stove? I don't see stoves on here. Is that an electric stove?
I don't think there's energy efficient stoves.
It has to be Energy Star. It has to be Star.
Yeah.
Usually electric stoves are like pure heat, you know, there's no savings there.
Now, back a long time ago when I first started, the push from the state was to get everybody off of electric and onto gas. Because, you know, you, the energy efficiency program is to reduce the, you know, the electricity. So then it's switched and now they want everybody off of gas and everybody on electric. Um, so I don't know how you have an energy efficiency program, like you're trying to get more people on, bring electric going in. And we talked about other things like lawnmowers and, and weed whackers, but that's not an efficiency thing. That's just an add-on, adding on a usage thing.
Yeah, you wouldn't find any Energy, Energy Star lawnmowers or anything, I don't think.
Right.
Unless you're buying a battery operated one.
But a lot of the other programs do have that, those things, cause it's what they want to use.
That is true. We just bought two battery mowers.
Oh, yeah?
Pushing it away.
Oh, boy, a riding one too? Is it steel? Do you know the brand?
No, it's Greenworks.
Okay.
We get a lot of Greenworks stuff and they work fine. I don't know what happens when the thing die.
Buy more batteries.
That's right.
So do we need to then make some suggestions for this?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, I think like ideas where we should bump up, like a, maybe one fifty across the board, except for the smaller things like the thermostat?
Well, we could just double everything.
Okay. Yes, good idea. Good idea. I think you should just, everything should maybe be one number. Cause, cause I'm looking at, okay, seventy-five for that, fifty for that, sixty-five for that, like, why not just one fifty for everything or two hundred for everything or whatever?
Cause is a dehumidifier even two hundred?
Except for that.
Oh, yeah, the dehumidifiers, yeah.
The dehumidifier.
Everything went up.
Yeah.
Well, so we'd have the, the thermostat too.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Those things we have to cut out.
We could keep the dehumidifier and the thermostat both at fifty.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
And then everything else one fifty or one seventy-five or whatever you guys think?
Aren't refrigerators your biggest use of electricity, your biggest electricity suck in your house yet? So maybe those two are higher.
Refrigerators is, is one of the biggest rebates that we get out.
So that one's used quite a bit.
Cause people, yeah, they do buy that one.
I mean, maybe that's our high ticket. I would keep that, do that two fifty on that, everything else.
Freezer, refrigerator, washers, dryers, those are high use items.
Yeah.
I, I, whatever, guys, I mean, I like, I like the idea of doubling, but I think everything should stay at a hundred though.
Or.
Finance, that's finally.
So air conditioning a little one fifty, you're saying, Court?
Mm-hmm.
Hot water heater, now those things have gone up like double.
Well, that's a lot.
I mean, that's up there with your refrigerators, I think.
I think we spent fifteen.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's crazy. Well, I think the goal isn't probably to pay a lot back, but it's just give them a little incentive.
Right, yeah.
So I think a double everything. Doubling is fine, yeah, that's good.
Doubling everything except for the dehumidifier and programmable thermostats and...
Put those both at fifty, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's, for a long time, we were actually giving out, we're breaking even, we're giving out about the same as we're taking in, which is perfect.
Yep.
Yeah, and things are so expensive too, and, and, so there's that one. The lighting, so, I don't know, I should, so, commercial lighting, it's fifty percent. So, no, it's fifty cents.
It should be good.
That's a really good incentive.
Yeah, cause let's keep it up in the cost anyways.
That's perfectly fine. These commercial window rebate, this was a, was a specialty one because, um, when we were doing all the downtown, all the downtown and we're doing, you know, uh, the main street fan, um, a lot of these one of the, we replaced. And if you notice, thank goodness, there's the gentleman who bought seventeen and nineteen, fifteen, seventeen?
Yeah, new owner.
Oh, they got, dude.
So he's already put a new window in there. He's gonna put two new windows in. He's paving out back. He's already painting. He's got a crew coming to paint the front and work on the whole thing. And he's gotta go through that thing and, and it's just a godsend.
Oh, cool. What's he gonna put in there?
Um, he doesn't, he said he doesn't care. He basically, when it comes to storefronts, he just wants them filled, because it brings people. So he keeps it, keeps it really, really low. He's not trying to make money off the storefronts. He just wants, don't want them empty. So he killed, he said he'd get like super, super cheap.
Is he a local person?
New.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he lives in Leroy or if he just does a lot of Leroy, but, yeah.
He's got three hundred properties.
So, yeah, that's why this was, this was done, um, so. Home electric charging, oh, times twenty-five, that's correct. Um, so same thing with home electric car charging's fifty percent, up to a certain amount.
That should be good.
Uh, furnace rebate might need a little bit of work, uh, just on the wording and whatnot, and I don't know about the, the costs.
I think it should just be a thousand for both.
Just for everything that comes with it.
I think about my neighbor who replaced, they had a twenty-five year old and kept the gas, but went, efficiency went crazy. There's so much savings there, and he should be eligible for the thousand as well.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, you're replacing a twenty-year.
Yeah.
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 You keep it both at a thousand?
Yeah. So he was, that's perfect, fine, I don't know.
And all the, all the different types of furnaces have to be ninety-two percent efficient, right? That's, that's a standard.
Yeah, I think most of them are nowadays.
Yeah, it's like ninety-five, eight, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Those, uh, the first are expensive, the first of mini splits and whatever, um, two thousand is.
Oh, I'm pretty thinking of more.
I think you need more.
You do?
Okay.
That's what I was saying was I, I don't know how much they are, but aren't they ten grand or something?
Oh, that's just scratching the surface. You're looking at probably fifteen, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars.
A house.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Like the system that I put in my house, what, five years ago, was, was around ten thousand dollars. And they told me today that it's closer to twenty thousand. Yeah. Wow.
So that's the thing, a thousand dollars don't help anybody.
Yeah, so what do you want, double that then? Two then?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's say two. As long as it's a high efficiency.
Now, what happens if people start coming in in droves and then we, and we burn through that money?
Yeah.
Then where does it come from?
Then, well...
It's done.
Yeah, sure, if, if, you know, we're taking a big chunk of the car, um, I, you know, I don't see a big run thing, but, um, if you do, I, I think by the time we, it, it will, will that back down pretty quick.
Okay, so it's not, that's not really a risk.
But it is possible. I'm not saying, you know, it.
It's not a big risk.
Or, or the next step would be you raise the one mil adder to two mil. The rest of the M U A systems all went to two mil.
Oh, and we decided not?
We're at one.
Oh, we would lose, they would lose their minds if six months from now, a year from now, we decide to go from one to two.
But, you know, we're, we're taking it up now and people, we're not using what we got, so if you know sets raising it another one tenth of a cent, we're killing one hour, so. That's why we left our, where it is, but yeah, we find it, hey, now people are starting to use this, utilize this.
Yeah.
Rebates, then we go, you can raise it to generate more revenue.
So change it now into two thousand?
The heat pumps, no, the heat furnace.
Furnace and heat, two thousand, yeah.
So we can, we can skip the infrared scan.
Yeah.
That's, uh, that's, uh, cost of that. We have a, a house, like a resident, who has signed up for the scan every single year since we started doing them.
Why?
Have you made any corrections?
I don't believe so.
They just like to see the, the red spots on their house. I mean, you think it's gonna change here to here.
I would like to sign up for it again, cause I did put insulation all around the whole, whole apartment. So I would like to see the infrared.
I mean, it's, it's pretty, pretty neat.
Yeah.
Unless your house is like my old house and it's all red, it's not fun to see.
Yeah.
This insulation program, um...
Only for electric furnace and baseboard heat?
Yeah, that was the original program, so, um, nothing we changed too. Twenty-five percent is still probably, you know, it'd just be up to amount might need to change. Twenty-five up to a thousand might run through that.
Should we just be twenty-five percent total?
No.
Or is that too much? I don't know what that costs.
Yeah, I don't know either.
It depends if you have like blown into your sides and all that, it could run over.
If they do the, the foam.
Foam, that's what I mean, yeah, you know, cause you got, two stories, you gotta go, it won't go all the way up, you gotta go to the second floor.
You could double that to two thousand.
But only on electric?
We can change that too.
Yeah, I would change that, that's, yeah.
I, I would change, change that.
Yep.
So twenty-five percent up to two thousand dollar max? Seems good.
Yeah, I think so.
And for not just electric, but for...
Right, well, it would probably take out the six inches part because, um, the foam.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
It might not be six inches.
Yeah, take that out.
Can I just clarify the furnace one? I know we doubled, did we double electric furnace with the gas or electric furnace with the heat pump? Or did we leave the other, the bottom one, the same, gas furnace?
Fix us any furnace.
We said all.
Any replacement furnace.
Two thousand across the board.
What do you think?
High efficiency.
I, I don't know if I'm in line with gas furnace with gas furnace. I mean, this is electric, it's supposed to be electric.
Sure.
I guess that's what I assumed, that this everything's had to be, you know, so there isn't a rebate enough for gas, right? There is the, it's gas if you're turning it's electric.
Yeah, the, the five hun- it's five hundred, it's just the second half.
But that's if you're replacing the gas with an electric, right?
No, it's replace electric with electric or replace gas with gas.
Yeah. So we double that to a thousand.
Yeah, I just don't think it should be two thousand.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm all for energy efficiency, whether it's natural gas or electric, but it's, this money's coming from electric.
Yep.
Trying to cut our electric load and gas to gas and that.
That makes sense.
Yeah. It does have a little bit with going from the old blower to a new blower. Not the same as...
You definitely don't want an electric furnace.
I had an electric, electric forced air furnace for years in my old house.
I mean, talking about using up power.
And I was, and then one or two times it was over four hundred bucks a month, on electric, that furnace.
Our house on this road, yeah, that, well, whatever it is underground.
Well, was it, was it geothermal?
Geothermal.
Yeah.
It's so, so, so cheap.
Yeah.
So customers who primarily use our electric furnace or baseboard and upgrade to natural gas or heat pumps are eligible for now two thousand? Right?
Right, that's what we said, yeah.
Are other furnace replacements and installations, so what if someone has a natural gas twenty years old and they're adding a new natural gas, high efficiency?
It's only a, only a thousand, I guess.
Shouldn't they hit the two thousand?
Again, they're not, you, you're not saving a lot of kilowatt.
By upgrading to a high efficiency from a twenty-year-old. Well, efficiency is a gas.
You're right.
Well, we say that this money's coming from the electricity, it's coming from our electric.
We're trying to basically get people, we're trying to save, drop our load of electricity, of overall demand.
Want them to be on gas, no?
It, basically, yes.
Right.
Rather than be on, unless, unless it's on a heat pump, you know, cause everybody's pushing the heat.
So if a natural gas furnace is upgraded to a natural gas furnace, it's a power, that's what it's, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
So your point is that, well, you're not changing your natural gas furnace over to an electric furnace, so that still should be incentivized.
That's kind of what I'm thinking. Most people aren't on natural gas, aren't they?
Not necessarily.
We don't have gas in the subdivision. Really? So you guys on all baseball.
There's no gas on my end of the street.
Oh, I'm on gas.
Baseball.
I want it in there, but... So what do you upgrade when you upgrade? What do you do? Upgrade what?
Your furnace?
I got a baseboard electric panels. It's just electric in baseboards? If they, if they replace it, I'll just buy another. Get nothing? Yeah, if they, if they crap out, I just buy another electric panel.
Okay.
Yeah. They could, and the only upgrade would probably be heat pumps.
Heat pumps, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, you had put in yours, it's like an outside thing with the little.
Yeah, the mini splits.
It does split to room.
And air conditioning, okay.
That's what I was gonna ask is, uh, what, what do we do about mini splits? It does say replace, but like if someone added a mini split.
Heat pump, basically, right?
That's what a heat pump is, the mini split.
Okay. Yeah.
That's what the state's really pushing now. They are pretty energy efficient.
So for that, we're giving two thousand, right, for the heat pump?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We got LED bulbs and fixtures, fifty percent up to...
This is for an essential?
Yes.
So if I buy LED bulbs at like Weyman's, do you get money back?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
I know, I might have bought twenty-five of those bulbs last year, thirty, I don't know.
Wow, there you go.
Probably more than that.
Wow. Of course, you'd get it at the dollar store for some dollar.
That's why you went to a percentage, because they got so cheap that we were giving out more than the cost. Yeah, that's why we can't keep by giving out more.
Yeah.
Refrigerator pickup, um, seventy-five dollars. I don't know if you want to increase that.
And you'll still call it pickup?
Yeah.
So you just, they'll just have to tell you if the company took it?
What if nobody takes it?
Then we, we do pick it up.
We do pick it up.
We will, if, if it, we will pick it up, yeah.
Pretty, you know, people are gonna hold you to that.
We'll pick it up if, if scappers don't. We, we've picked up a bucket, but...
If it's got frame, they might not.
Right. I don't know.
Very good.
Refrigerator, great, great, but I think seventy-five for that's...
Yeah.
It's already given, I mean, fine.
Right, right.
Maybe, maybe you could say on there, this does also apply if the appliance company takes your old refrigerator.
Cause they may even charge the customer to take it.
Yeah, those in Home Depot, they, I think a fifty dollar charge to remove your old appliance.
They're already getting that.
Right.
The last one, we got windows and doors.
I have a question on that. I got triple track storms screens. Would they apply for these or not? If they were like Energy Star labeled or something?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay.
Would you say triple tracks?
Triple tracks, where you've got like you slide the screen up and the storm window down.
Oh.
So there's, there's two panes of glass and one screen, so you're basically doing this all season, you know, up, down.[1686.64]
So the window itself has up, down, but on the other side of the window, you've got a triple track storms and screens. So when I have like, renewal by Anderson comes by, oh, we're gonna replace all your windows, I said, no, actually, I just need new triple track storms and screens, and they go. I don't know what that is.
No idea.
But it's an easy way to get rid of them, because they don't know what it is.
They take their label, energy star. They meet, they meet the, whatever that number is.
Anybody know good window people?
Are we gonna leave that seventy-five?
It's your fault. It's your fault.
Forty, I, I bought that house for me twenty years.
That's incredible, isn't it?
I had someone ask me about, recently I've been picking up tires. Is there, is there like, can you purchase?
No, there's, there's no way.
You could go to Fisher, Dale Fisher, they'll charge you like five bucks a piece.
Oh, would?
Don't they do it over here too?
Even here.
Probably does, probably does. If you're really crafty and cut them up into four pieces with a sawzall and.
Really?
Oh yeah, if they're cut up into little pieces, you, they'll, they'll go in the landfill. You can't put a whole tire in the landfill because it traps air and gases and they work themselves to the surface, just like rocks do in a farmer's field. But if they're chopped up into little pieces, they, they put them in a landfill.
Oh, interesting.
Or if you know somebody in Brockport, they have their cleanup in April, they take everything. I have, I got a buddy that helps me when I boat, I take the tires over there and boom, they're gone. That's really surprising, because the, the only place that I'm aware of that takes tires and bulk is at Shredder up in Brockport, and I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars a ton. To get rid of tires, and that's not including like tractor tires or truck tires, it's just car pickup truck tires.
Uh, so just to go back to the Western Regional Meeting. Are you, you're coming as a guest?
No.
Mike's coming.
Mike's coming.
He'll be there.
I'm gonna play golf in here.
Anybody else?
That's next Wednesday, right?
Wednesday evening.
And who are you hosting again?
The M U, M U A, it's the Electric Utility Association.
Is there a meeting that day?
Starts at eight thirty.
That means you guys have to run the meeting.
I get up and talk, there's guest speakers who've just started talking for an hour on a topic and that consists of the meeting, unless it's all big with.
So when we have local, we got Holly, Castile, Fairport. Yeah, there's a bunch. They don't have their own electrical. Spencerport, Fairport.
Holly, Silver Springs. Castile, Silver Springs.
And so people from all of their village offices will be coming or just?
They can, it's, it's open to all the.
How many people do you expect?
Not that many, probably thirty, they said there was thirty.
As, yeah, so as of Monday, we had, without our, we had, without, without. Twenty for golf, twenty-seven for dinner. So they won't have these, so, yeah.
They probably looked at him and said, virgin?
Oh no, they know virgin.
I'm sure they do.
They go way back. All right, move on. Okay, the next thing, about the zombie home. So with that, I've requested that we go into executive session to discuss that for legal matters. So with that, you wanna shut the?
Uh, you gotta vote.
Vote to go into executive session?
To make the motion, we go into executive session to discuss the zombie home legislation. A second.
All in favor?